Proceed with each measure. No problem. We'll proceed with each measure as it's listed on the agenda. After taking all testifiers who have signed up for that measure, we will then proceed to questioning by our legislative members. And then we'll move on to the next measure. I'd also like to ask our testifiers if you could help us by ensuring that your name is reflected under the testimony that is submitted so that we know, we can better spotlight you and identify you when you're testifying on the bill. That would be helpful. In addition to if you're not testifying on the bill, keeping your camera off, but turning your camera on when you are called or it is the bill that you are here to testify on. Additionally, one thing that I personally like to ask is that many issues that come before the Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee are, can be controversial and can inspire heated feelings on either side. But I think one of the things that makes Hawaii very special is our ability to debate and agree to disagree civilly and with aloha. So I would just ask that everyone be respectful of each other. That's both my ask and also my expectation of committing. With that, I'm happy to move on to our agenda. First off, we have, this is largely our condo association, planned community association, and building code related agendas for today. First off, we have HB 2272. This makes various clarifying amendments relating to condo association governance, as well as the financial solvency of various condos. Many different amendments along those lines. First off, we have our first testifier for the Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners, Jane Sukimura.
Thank you, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. My name is Jane Sukimura. I'm president of the Hawaii Council of Association of Apartment Owners. The Hawaii Council supports this bill and asks that this bill be passed out. And I want to just make one clarification. We did, the council did propose changes to section eight of this bill relating to the budget and reserves. And I know that Richard Emery, who was part of CAI, has submitted some, some changes. And he and I had a discussion. And Hawaii Council agrees with Mr. Emery's suggested amendments. And I understand that he has suggested that certain language be deleted. We do not have any objections. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you very much. Also indicating that they would be present and testifying, we have Steve Glansteen with the Hawaii State Association of Parliamentarians.
Good. Let me see if I'm unmuted here. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and members. We are in favor of this particular bill and its amendments. We've identified each of the, each of the items there from sections one, two, three, and four. Just to note one on petitions. We have seen some petition abuse that's occurred in, in the state where the same petition gets used multiple times. So this would propose to make sure that there's dates on it and that it's, it's a fresh petition for a completely new meeting. Also correcting something on the proxy deadline was a surprise that with management companies that are national, we have to make sure it's clear that it's Hawaiian, Hawaii Alucian Standard Time. And, and that's, that's Hawaii State Association of Parliamentarians. We request that you pass the bill there. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We also have Lorda Shiber, Kokoah Council.
Hi, I just, I'm just here to support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Also indicating that they would be present to testify on this measure, we have Lila Moore.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I stand on my testimony submitted with these comments. Using statistics from the U.S. Census Bureau, Hawaii's Department of Business Economic Developmenters, and DCCA, nearly one-third of all of Hawaii's residences are condominiums. The National Organization Community Associations Institute, CAI, conducts a nationwide survey of residents of association governed communities. Data from their most recent poll is often misquoted, so I give you the correct numbers. Their survey reveals that 70% of residents rated their overall community associate experience as good or very good. That was 70%, 19% as neutral. From this, we can derive that 11% rated their experiences as negative, poor, or bad. Earlier reports used to show these negative numbers, but the most recent report did not. Translate these national statistics to Hawaii, and that means over 50,000 Hawaii residents would rate their association governs communities as negative, good, or bad. Again, that's 50,000 Hawaii residents. So one, another thing, well-known attorney Terry Revere said 90% of local condo associations that are bad give a bad name to remaining 10% that are. Please keep these numbers in mind as you review the measures before you. Mahalo.
Thank you, Lila. Also indicating that they would be present to testify on HB 2272 is Dale Head.
Hello there. Aloha.
Hi.
I'm from the Hawaii Valley. And I don't support this particular bill. I oppose it. It's this, too many restrictions. There are like 120 days to get a petition from the country and foreign countries. It's absolutely impossible to get all those people to sign your petition and get it in. It just creates too many restrictions. And this stuff about modern voting methods only during the pandemic or county emergency disrespects the right of the taxpayer who owns a condo to cast their own vote. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, I would like to ask, is there anyone else who has submitted testimony on this measure and indicated that they would be present who would like to testify on HB 2272? That's the extent of what we show as committing to testify today, but I did want to ask. Okay. If not, members, please note that we have. One second. I don't see it on my screen.
Phil Nerny. Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Written testimony was submitted on behalf of CAI in support. We would stand on that testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Do we have that for the record? Okay, Phil, if you can work with our Vice Chair's office to make sure that we have that for the record. So when it gets posted online, it's included in the packet.
Yes, of course.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Members, please note there's also various supportive testimony, as well as some opposition and comments from individuals and groups who have proffered written testimony. We also have late testimony in support and opposition in written form as well. With that, we'll transition to our question and answer period. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item. HB 1583, this is relating to condominiums. And this requires condo associations to allow members or their proxies to vote by mail and attend and cast votes in association meetings through the internet teleconference or other electronic transmission technologies. Would also ensure the provision of copies of printed audit trails. Members, the largest change in this bill would be that it's not just related, these various types of voting are not just related to pandemic times. That's, whereas that's currently just specific to only in pandemic situations. First off, on HB 1583, we have Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners, Jane Sukimura.
Thank you, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. I'm, Hawaii Council supports this bill, but we join with CAI. And I know CAI, I think, has asked, suggested that a task force be set up to get input from stakeholders and report back to the legislature. I mean, this is, I mean, this is the, I, we agree that this is the wave of the future, this technology. But I think we need to, you know, allow the stakeholders' input before taking, asking the legislator, legislature to take steps to codify it. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Next on HB 1583, we have Steve Glansteen with the Hawaii Association of Parliamentarians in opposition.
Yeah. Hello again, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair members. Yes, our, our State Association of Parliamentarians is opposed to this bill. We do have some compromise involved to try to craft something that protects owners' rights. But basically, the bill would propose to give the associations the power to order an electronic meeting, an electronic machine or mail vote, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in their documents. And of course, it would remove the requirement that there be an emergency situation. When Bill 83 was worked on, the, the whole purpose of allowing this type of meeting was to provide for an emergency and relief for the associations. Currently, in the last year, the, the use of, of other methods has not been a very good success, in my opinion. When it takes six hours to do an annual meeting, 90 minutes to do a check-in, that's just totally unacceptable. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be fixed. However, the, the whole principle of chapter 514B was to have the bylaws describe how associations would conduct their business. 514B 108 is real clear on that. And this, this override for an emergency and then removing the emergency is a lot to do with, and very soon. Now, it also could be used as a political way that owners or board members could defeat various types of removal procedures, or, or, or for that matter, control an election. And in a very interesting political way, however, I don't want to provide a roadmap for people to, to abuse this particular system. So we'd ask that the committee defer or hold it. However, if they do want to move this forward, I'd suggest that you create a task force with several of the stakeholders. Those, those of us who do a lot of meetings who are dealing with the actual effect of this legislation and what we've seen in the past year, we certainly would be happy to work with, with people if any, to discuss any unintended consequences that might occur. Thanks for the opportunity to provide the testimonies, Chair.
Thank you very much, Steve. We also have Lorda Shiber, Kokoah Council in support.
Thank you. I stand on my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Also indicating that they would be present and wishing to testify, we have Lila Moore in support.
Aloha. I stand on my testimony submitted, and I do want to add that I'll make comments regarding elections on the next measure. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Dale Head in support.
Okay. Thank you very much. In this particular bill, I requested from Senator Don Mercado Kim and Representative Lindy Chiama. I was in a condominium complex for 34 years and 10 months. All right. And I've received calls from the mainland, from some of the condo owners, their investors. And their elderly now have health problems, cannot travel. They asked me, why can't I cast my own vote? Very, very embarrassed to tell them, because none of our legislators have ever expressed that you have the right to do so. And we've had people fly down from several different states, rent a hotel room, rent a car, expenses, come to a meeting, be told, oh gee, we don't have quorum. The management company knew that beforehand. They could have told them, all right? A lot of money was wasted. They're very frustrated. Respect the taxpayer, respect our voting rights. All right. Arizona and Florida do not allow voting for board members on proxies. You don't see any problems about that in the news. And we've been a state since 1959. The thing blocking us with using the mail and internet is the management companies and their lobbyists, all right? It's up to the legislators, not those people. The owners, us, we're the stakeholders, all right? Please respect the stakeholders and her voting rights. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Head. Phil, I know you're here, although it didn't indicate that you'd be testifying. So Phil, did you also want to testify on this measure?
Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members, CAI also shares the concerns of Mr. Glansteen and Ms. Sukimura. We support the coming technological opportunities to meet electronically in a fair and safe manner. It does seem that there are some impediments yet present. And as Mr. Glansteen pointed out, there could be some manipulation of the system that would be anti-consumer and anti-owner. So we do suggest a task force so that the problems can be thoroughly vetted before legislation is enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, please note that's the extent of individuals who have signed up to testify. I do see on the broader screen, though, that we have individuals in the hearing room virtually who have also proffered testimony. So I do want to give an opportunity. If I didn't call your name and you've provided testimony on this measure and you'd like to testify, please either raise your hand or turn on your screen or signal to us, and I'd be happy to call on you. Okay, if nobody else is wishing to testify on this measure, please, on this measure, members, please note that there is a range of oppositional and supportive testimony, as well as comments provided in written form on time and late in your packet on this measure, HB 1583. Members, any questions on HB 1583? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item. I did forget to mention for everyone in our hearing today, we do have a two-minute time limit. So once, no one has come close to that. But once your two minutes comes up, I'll ask you to start to summarize. I just forgot to mention that in our opening today and didn't want to surprise anyone. Our next measure, HB 1651. This is also relating to condominiums, and this would amend the requirements for a condominium association standard proxy form by deleting the option to check that condominium owners can give their proxy to the board as a whole. First off, on HB 1651, we have Lorda Shiber in support.
Hi. Thank you to the committee for allowing me to be here to testify. I stand on my, my testimony, but would like to add, I'm doing a lot of research because I just wanted to understand the opposition of why they don't want to delete this proxy. So I went back into the archives, state archives, and went back, all the way back to 1984, and came up with a Denman and Yokayama ad hoc committee. And I pulled out just one paragraph. And the paragraph says, "For these reasons, it is believed that the only logical way to vote proxies given to the board are as directed by a majority of the directors actually present, and to allow the right to divide the proxies evenly among the directors present in the event, in the event of a tie, or in the event of the tie, or upon decision of the Board of Directors to do so." In fact, this is the way proxies given to the boards are generally voted on. This is prior to 1984. So to remove any doubt of the legality of the present common practice. The two, the two proxies were created, which confused me because there's two separate proxies. Before 1984, they exercised the proxies in the board as the meeting was going. So they just wanted to break the tie and they would share the, the proxies. So now we fast forward all the way to 30 years later, and the issues on the proxies as a whole assigned to the majority continues. Escalated disputes between owners, the boards, et cetera. I came across another 1991 condominium dispute resolution by Gregory K. Tanaka. And that study was used for the recodification of 514B. And he says, "An imbalance of power between the board and the owner seems to be the perception among some condominium owners, with associations holding most of the cards and acting upon advice of council, not to even discuss the matter." Sorry. There does indeed seem to be an impasse to resolution. The results in even the most minor matters wind up in protracted litigation. And that's the problem that most owners are coming against. We want to talk to our directors. We want to express our feelings, same as I'm doing today with the opportunity with all your legislatures, and I thank you. But when an owner approaches a director, the director, and I've been told that as a director, that they are to be referred to the property manager, which makes no sense because the property manager doesn't get back to them, and that frustrates them. So I go on, another quote. Oh, this one is good. Back in 1989, there was another study, and that was done by 1989 condominium governance, an examination of some issues by Charlotte Carter Yamauchi. And I quote from Hawaii's condominium specialist, John Morris, hired in 1988. "A number of the boards tend to treat inquiries and requests for information as if intended solely for the personal benefit of the requesting party and not in the general interest of all owners. They either are unaware or forget that chapter 514A is essentially self-enforcing. When the owners themselves have primary responsibility for ensuring their board complies with the governing documents and with state law, and on another testimony, they should be complying with the city and county DPP, safety fire, safety codes, and fire codes." So in 1994, this 38 years. So that was the opinion of the ad hoc, and we developed these two proxies. So let's fast forward to 2020 and see what the opinion is today. This is in the newsletter.
Lorda, if you can start to summarize a little bit, that'd be great.
Okay, so the proxies as a, as a whole was sent out in a newsletter. There was four directors, four people that was running to be a director. The board asked for the proxies as a whole to be given to the board, and they only advertised three of the four, and I was excluded. I never saw the newsletter they'd put out, and I feel cheated because I wasn't put forward in a newsletter to the owners. And that's, that's money spent for my association, and that's not fair. So what I'm asking for is either we come to some kind of agreement and, and do a condominium act further supports unbiased voting and avoiding potential conflicts. This is Florida's Condominium Act FS 718. Association, when it states that neither limited or general proxies may be used when electing directors to the board. So thank you very much. If you need to set up a task force, I assure you that you should because we don't keep coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorda, and thanks for your work on this issue. Jane Sukimura, Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners in opposition.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johansson. And members of the committee, Hawaii Council opposes this bill because an owner should have the right to assign his or her proxy to the board as a whole if the owner believes the board is doing a satisfactory job of administering the project. The advocates for this bill can accomplish their objective to educate owners to not mark that box. And, and removal of a box just minimizes the owner's right to choose. So we, for those reasons, we oppose this bill, and we ask that you defer action on it. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you, Jane. We also have Steve Glansteen, Hawaii State Association of Parliamentarians in opposition.
Yeah. Yes, good afternoon again, Mr. Chair. We, we rise in opposition to 1650, to 1651. Just to provide a little bit of history. The boards don't always get the votes. For example, my last week, Wednesday, meeting, the board only had 10% of the ownership behind them, and the board members were summarily removed from office. So that doesn't, it doesn't seem like the board always has the most power. Now, historically, the proxies used to be given to the president. Before the 1983, 84 statute, the proxies were actually given to presidents rather than the board. And so presidents ended up with a lot of power. That has been changed over the decades. So now there's a, there's an equal right where there's a notice posting. If there's any association funds used for proxy solicitation, they have to post notice of it. And owners do have an opportunity to put in a statement. It's a full-page statement. And so it, it has equalized the, the, the opportunity for owners to get their message out to their fellow owners. Historically, a bill such as this has been rejected numerous times. It was rejected last year, 2021. It was rejected in 2019. It was, it was rejected, oh, in 2009. And so it does have a history of being rejected. And the situation really has not only not changed, but it's actually become much more proactive to make sure that owners are aware of their rights. With the current emergency, there's even been more of a push by, by boards to make sure that they get a sufficient number of nominees. So they have actually gone beyond what the statute requires to, to get people who are interested in running, as well as people who, who wish to solicit proxies. So the, I don't, we don't see any need to change this. It does have a, a fair, a fair approach, and it is quite balanced. So we ask that you defer, once again, hold this bill.
Thank you very much, Steve. We also have Lila Moore in support.
Hello, Chair, may I testify, please?
Yes, yes, please. Go ahead, Lila. Thank you.
Thank you. I stand on my written testimony, and I'd like to add these comments. A general proxy gives a proxy holder carte blanche discretion to vote however the holder wants. The more removed a voter is from the actual castion visible, the greater the possibility of malfeasance, the possibility of nefarious interference. Additionally, board should be requested, required, excuse me, to retain a third-party outside professional to facilitate the election and tabulate votes. As it is, property management firms normally facilitate these votes, and they are not neutral third parties. Based on my over 10 election record reviews, I don't know how many I've done already, over 10, we've seen what sometimes unintentional or intentional interference, tampering with elections, and so forth. If our local government, state public government can have mail-in voting, I don't see why we too cannot have direct voting and why we have to go the proxy route. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lila. We also have Jeff Sedino in support.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. My name is Jeff Sedino. I'm a condo owner, and I strongly support this bill to remove voting as a whole. The supporters of voting as a whole claim that condo boards know what is best and is acting in the best interests of the association. However, Hawaii has the highest number of negligent condo boards in the entire country. This is not my subjective opinion. This is according to the objective conclusion of the condo industry themselves. According to them, we have more lawsuits against condo boards for negligence and breach of fiduciary duty than any other state in the country. This alone should mean case closed and end of story. But when you account for the fact that Florida has 10 times more condo associations than we do, and we still outnumber Florida for boards behaving badly, it is hopefully obvious that the urgent need for change is long, long overdue. The legislative branch makes the laws. The judicial branch decides whether or not those laws are being followed. The judiciary branch has spoken. They say that way too many condo boards in Hawaii do not act in the best interest of the association. I see this every year and in every election in my own association. I strongly urge you to support this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Jeff. Marcia Kimura, I also see you. Did you want to testify in support? I, I think you're still muted, Marcia.
I have submitted written testimony in support of this bill and will stand on it.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we didn't disenfranchise you. I saw you sitting there, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to testify. Thank you.
I, I am also, I'm sorry, I'm also in support of a third party to oversee and monitor results of these, these elections and other operations associated with the, the elections and other, um, other projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcia. Paul Cofteau in opposition. Hey, I see you in the room. I'm not sure if you wanted to testify on this measure.
Um, yes, I do. Uh, I'm sorry. Can, can you let me know what, which one we're on?
Uh, we're on HB sixteen fifty-one. This would be deleting the option to give your proxy to the board as a whole.
Uh, thank you, Representative, but I stand on my written testimony.
Okay, in opposition. Thank you, Paul. Uh, we also have Dale Head in support.
Oh, hello. Thank you. See, I wrote a letter at the December of two thousand eighteen, which got this same bill under different number back then. And the real estate commission, when this business was changed off to the six, warranted with due to abuse. And I've gone down and audited the proxies and discovered that for instance, seventy-six proxies were for board as a whole, twenty-six to be divided equally between those presidents to be board members, vote as they choose, but the board was never told this. Hello. And then the audit, I found out that the hundred and one proxies total were kept combined and given to two people who were at the back of the line. They should not be on the board. They're illegitimate. This creates a puppet board, okay? Property managers should not be doing this, but there's no rule against it. Let me give you one quote from this fellow from history. You might remember Joseph Stalin. And this is found by, by friend Lila Moore. Okay, Stalin was a repressive autocrat. He famously or infamously said, "It is enough that the people know there was an election. The people who cast the votes decide nothing. The people who count the votes decide everything." That has been my experience, and I've found the same thing true with comparing those people, other complexes. That proxy firm should offer the option to vote for who you want to. That is called a directed proxy. And this given it to the board, in fact, says they receive a property manager, he gets them. He does what he wants with them. This is really unfair. As again, I say, owners are the stockholders, excuse me, stakeholders. Not the parliamentarian or the collection lawyers. So please pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Um, I also see, um, let's see, Larrie McGuire. I'm not sure if you wanted to testify. I know you're in the virtual hearing room, and you submitted testimony.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I do stand on my testimony. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, in opposition. Uh, we also have late testimony from CAI, Phil Nrdi in opposition.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members for the opportunity to address this matter, which is, has been pointed out by Mr. Glanstein and Ms. Sugimura, um, comes up from time to time. In the written testimony, I pointed out that in the recodification final report, this provision didn't even merit a mention by the Real Estate Commission, that Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee that helped to develop five fourteen B had a diverse array of viewpoints. Everything was fought hard over, and this provision is a totally appropriate provision that has been embedded in condominium law for many long years. Nobody has to give a proxy. Anyone can attend a meeting in person. This simply is an option. If an owner is satisfied with a board, the owner has the option to say, "I give my proxy to the board, and the board as a whole can decide the matter, and I trust their judgment." There is no reason to deprive people of that liberty to give a proxy as they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, please, is there anyone else in the virtual hearing room who has provided testimony who I've not called who would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, please note that on this measure as well, HB sixteen fifty-one, uh, we have associations and individuals testifying and providing written testimony in opposition and support. Members, any questions on HB sixteen fifty-one? Okay, seeing no questions, then we will move on to our next agenda item. HB seventeen eighty-one relating to planned community associations. This establishes requirements for cumulative voting and the removal of directors of planned community associations. It exempts planned community associations from certain requirements regarding cumulative voting for the removal of directors under the Hawaii Nonprofit Corporations Act. On HB seventeen eighty-one, we have our first testifier, Steve Blanstein, Hawaii State Association of Parliamentarians.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We stand on our written testimony in support with specific amendments. In the last couple of years, there's been a little bit closer look at it, and so that's helped to even improve what has previously come out of the committees. Uh, it got, it did get shut down in twenty twenty because of the pandemic, so we, you know, we've worked together with several of the stakeholders to, to actually improve it a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Jane Sugimura, Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners in support.
Thank you, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitigawa, members of the committee. Hawaii Council stands in support of this bill, and in, uh, we agree with the amendments suggested by Steve Blanstein of the Hawaii Parliamentarians. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. We also have Larrie McGuire on behalf of CAI in support.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Um, I am here on behalf of CAI, uh, the Hawaii chapter, and, um, we do submit our testimony and stand on our testimony in support. We also support the amendment suggested by Mr. Glanstein. Uh, various stakeholders have met and discussed these amendments, and we are in agreement with them. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have let's see. Jeff Sedino offering comments.
Sorry, I walked away for a second. Are we on eighteen fifty-seven?
Seventeen eighty-one.
Oh, um, okay, I just stand on my testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we also have Paul Cofteau now, uh, in support.
I stand on my written testimony.
Okay. Um, members, I believe that's the extent of the people who have indicated that they would be testifying on this particular measure. Uh, Mr. Head, did you also want to testify on this measure?
But just, yeah, just to share some humor with you. I consider it a bad idea to let other board members remove a board member because you can't have any dissent in that manner. And if it's something abandoned a position, well, they can call it by telephone. You correct for that. But share with you real quickly, I went to a special meeting many years ago where they wanted to remove a board member. There are fifty people in the room. I said, everybody want to keep her on the board, raise your hand. All the hands went up. Everyone agrees to remove her from the board. Raise your hand. No hands went up. Then the president said, "Now I'm going to count the proxies." Oh, she's off the board. She was looking at a blank three-by-five card. This is nuts. This is not democracy, you know? This is bullying. So this is why we need a third party to talk to us, just by some other people. As I say, I'll just remind you one more time. It is the owners who are the proxy holders. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dale. Is there anyone else in the virtual testifier room who has submitted testimony on HB seventeen eighty-one who would like to testify that I haven't called? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, please note that there are various testimonies and support and comments, uh, both from organizations and individuals on HB seventeen eighty-one. But that will transition to questions. Members, any questions on HB seventeen eighty-one? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB eighteen fifty-seven relating to condominium associations. Uh, this requires that the fees for attorneys retained by a condominium association be paid from an association's funds or reserves. It limits the total and final legal fees to twenty-five percent of the original debt amount. It also requires attorneys retained by the condominium association to confine their communications to the condo board, except when the attorneys must request and require materials and responses directly from owners for each matter, and it would prohibit attorneys retained by the condo association from billing unit owners directly. First off, we have Jane Sugimura, Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners in opposition.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johnson, Johansson, Vice Chair Kitigawa, members of the committee. Uh, the Hawaii Council opposes this bill for the following reasons. Attorney's fee payment by the association are generally operating expenses, cannot be paid from the reserve funds based on express language in HRS five fourteen B dash one forty-eight. And the association has a fiduciary duty to collect delinquent maintenance fees, and they generally engage attorneys to do this collection. The twenty-five percent that shows up in this bill, uh, the cap on attorney's fees, is based on HRS six oh seven dash fourteen. And that, uh, that law governs the award of attorney's fees in lawsuits on a sum set claims. And since many of these maintenance fee collections never get into litigation, the twenty-five percent is inapplicable. Also, associations use attorneys, uh, to, uh, enforce rules and covenants, and those types of actions do not have a monetary value, so the twenty-five percent would not be applicable in those situations. And attorneys representing associations to collect delinquent maintenance fees or to enforce, uh, compliance with rules or covenants by necessity have to communicate with the defaulting owners. I mean, that's, that's the only way they can do their jobs, and by prohibiting from communicating with the owners, uh, they wouldn't be able to perform, uh, the legal services that they were hired by the association to do. And finally, association councils are generally paid for by their client, who is the association. And they, I, I don't know of any association that, uh, allows the attorney to seek their payment from the unit owner. And if there is an attorney doing this, I agree that this is not right, but I don't think you should pass a law to, uh, you know, codify that requirement. Uh, so for those reasons, we, uh, ask you to defer this measure. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you very much, Jane. We also have Lourdes Schibert, Kokoa Council in support.
Yes, um, thank you for letting me testify today. I think the problem that, um, the issue that we want to express to all of you is that there is a degree of, of attorney's fees. And I did speak on testimony to the Senate that there are manini fines, like a hundred-dollar fines, that's attached to having an attorney try to collect the hundred dollars. The hundred dollars then piles on yada, 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 and I know of, uh, an owner who's a senior from a, from a thousand dollars went up to twelve thousand dollars. And those are the fees that we're talking about, attorney fees. The other fees were the attorney has to collect for close, maybe, um, on a large assessment like fifteen thousand dollars per unit for a hundred units, and five million dollars for backlog repair work that was, was deferred for thirty-eight years. Then he has a job to do. Then he's worth these two, three hundred dollars an hour to go after or, or get a plan up for the owner. I, I agree with that. We need them at some point, but we don't need them to collect on a hundred-dollar fine and then turn that into a maintenance assessment. Because maintenance assessments are non-essential, and they should be kept that way. Maintenance assess, uh, maintenance fees are for the structure of the building. That's why for thirty-eight years, your, your, uh, proxies as a whole to the board has controlled and kept the, um, reserves artificially low and passed the expenses now to generation after generation. And you're looking at someone who's seventy years old, who had the dream of aging in place and leaving my condo to my daughter and my granddaughter because of the housing shortage. Now I'm strapped with a one-point-six-million-dollar assessment for backlog of, of maintenance, deferred maintenance. Oh, and the letter says unforeseen. No, it wasn't unforeseen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lourdes. Uh, we also have Paul Cofteau in opposition.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitigawa. Um, I'm a condominium owner. I'm also an attorney who, whose practice is focused on the representation of community associations in Hawaii. Now, in addition to the reasons stated in my written testimony, I oppose this measure because it will hurt condominium unit owners by making it more difficult for their associations to enforce project documents, collect unpaid assessments, and foreclose on delinquent unit, unit, units. Um, like many owners, before I bought my condominium, I received copies of my association's project documents. I reviewed my project documents carefully, and I bought my condominium unit with the expectation that my association would be able to enforce the provisions of its governing documents. Uh, for example, my association has a provision in its bylaws which prohibits smoking on the project, and I fully expect my association to be able to enforce its bylaws against any resident who chooses to violate the same by smoking on the project. Now, generally, enforcement of an association's bylaws will start with an association sending violation notice letters to residents who break the rules, and that usually resolves the issues and prevents future violations. However, there are instances where those violation notice letters do not result in compliance, and it may become necessary for the association to retain an attorney to assist with taking legal action. Ideally, the resident will comply with the association's bylaws and not smoke on the project. However, if a, if a resident chooses to continue to violate the smoking restrictions, my association will have to choose whether it will go to court. This is not an isolated example, but it does illustrate the general expectations that I had when I bought my condominium unit, which, which should be no different from any other condominium unit owner's expectations. Now, if this measure passes, it would mean that if my association ever has to go to court to enforce its bylaws, it would not be able to recover attorney's fees against the resident who is found to have violated the bylaws. So with my example, if the smoker chooses to fight the case So with my example, if the smoker chooses to fight the case in court and run up the legal fees again, that the association is incurring, it would be extremely costly for the association and all of its members. Under this measure, even if the association prevailed and was able to obtain a court order to require the smoker to permanently cease and desist from smoking on the project, the association and all of the other owners would have to pay the association's attorney's fees. This would be a terrible result. And many associations who are working to enforce the rights of the association as a whole would recognize that this measure essentially penalizes associations and all other unit owners for seeking to enforce their rights in court. And in that way, this is not a consumer protection bill, because it would create serious barriers to condominium unit owners like me who comply with their association's project documents and who are also consumers. So this measure would make it more difficult for association owners like me to have access to justice. And that is why your committee should not pass this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we also have Lila Moore in support.
Aloha Chair, thank you very much. Um, I stand on my written testimony in support of this measure. And I'd like to remind um, the committee that a couple of years ago, and this is a headline from the Maui News, jury awards Kihei couple one point seven million dollars in a disability lawsuit. The subtitle to that was that the association find the owners two hundred dollars a day in the carpet, a carpeting dispute. Um, the plaintiff's attorney, Eric Ferrer, said, and to quote him, condo associations wield a great deal of power over their owners. When they issue fines like this, an attempt to steal an owner's home at a non-judicial foreclosure without giving the owner an opportunity to contest the fines as required by the bylaws, they can literally steal ho- owner's home while depriving them of their civil rights. This case sends a message to all condo associations that they cannot treat their owners with or without a disability in this way. Um, forgive me, but the prior testifier, um, Paul, I, I'm so sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. You said access to justice. One of the reasons I believe that this measure was drafted is because we are aware of many owners who've been charged with false violations and have had legal fees heaped upon them. And this is what we're trying to prevent. And I think it's misleading to blame the owners that associations have to carry these legal bills. Rather, the people who charge excessive legal bills uh, should be the ones to blame. Um, there's another case, it's a simple one, I found very quickly. And this is in Florida. Again, Florida has ten times the number of condominiums than Hawaii does. But again, as a reminder, Hawaii has the greatest number of DNO claims in the nation. This for- former Florida lawmaker said about hu- um, homeowners association fees um, that homeowners should do everything they can to pay their dues, which I agree with. And that we should comply with all the rules and regulations. But he also adds, taking advantage by extra costs is a concern. He said, quote, there are laws for debt collection. American Express, the water company, the phone company, these guys, referring to the association attorneys, play by a different set of rules altogether. Um, in this case, Tampa Bay report said that a seventy-five dollar fee had ballooned into one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars primarily because of unspecified attorney's fees. I would ask the committee to consider that these instances occur here in Hawaii. It's not just Florida. Um, I stand on my testimony in support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lila. Next, we have Jeff Sedino in support.
Yes, good after- afternoon again. My name is Jeff Sedino. I'm a condo owner. Um, and I work as a financial planner. I strongly support this bill. One hundred percent reimbursement of attorney fees makes it too easy to target owners who are vulnerable to exploitation. This happened to me and I almost went bankrupt. The cause of this is that I was unlucky to find myself in a relatively trivial disagreement with my board over the replacement of my kitchen cabinets. Instead of following the violation procedures in our governing documents and setting me a violation notice like they should have done, the board immediately sent me to their attorneys. It was the board who was violating the governing documents, not me. Their attorneys sent me multiple demand letters and filed a lawsuit against me. In my response, when they realized that I had hired an attorney to fight back, they stopped their harassment and they never again tried to pursue their claims against me. They just walked away and completely abandoned their claims. But the damage was already done. I spent eighteen thousand dollars to pay for my attorney and to pay for their five different attorneys. The end effect is I found myself one day away from going bankrupt and losing my home. And it was all completely unnecessary. To summarize, if the attorneys would have been responsible with this incredibly great power that they have been given, I probably would not even be here today. But they have abused this power. Please protect us. Please pass this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, we also have Steve Landstein in opposition.
Yes, Mr. Chair, committee members, I stand on my written testimony in opposition of HB eighteen fifty-seven, concur with CAR and Hawaii Council.
Thank you, Steve. We also have Marsha Kimura in support.
Uh, Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa, who are hearing this bill HB one eight five seven. Uh, first I ask that it be amended to delete the word "not", which is on page four of the original document, beginning of line twelve, because it's, it is inappropriate in the context of this bill. Okay, I believe that the passage of this bill should be based on some really very simple but solid truths. And the first of which is, when condo boards hire attorneys, the association is the attorney's client, which is who is responsible for paying the attorney's fees, regardless of the purpose of the legal hire. Number two, legal costs the association or an owner pays are recoverable by the prevailing party in legal actions. But the boards alone cannot rightfully decide who owes these fees by themselves in advance. Number three, as regards the twenty-five percent authority collections fee limit on total and final charges based on original principal balances, HOE fees are a consumer debt covered by the Federal Debt Collections Practices Act and by its Hawaii offshoot, HRS four four three B nine, which states that attorneys as collectors are bound by this limit and must collect their fees by filling them, filing for them in court. What makes condo attorneys an exception to this? That is my question. Okay, the fact is, association boards, as Joseph said, has said, have abused the use of, of their attorneys, for example, to retaliate against or put down silence owners. You know, it's arguable that boards would never allow legal charges to reach these amounts. They caused some owners to lose their homes if their associations were rightfully responsible for the legal bills their directors incur. And, you know, if we're, we're talking about, um, we are talking about owners, the re- the relationship between owners and the attorneys, not clients. I mean, I'm sorry, not tenants. And so, you know, I am, I ask with sincere conviction that your committee progress is built toward passage. And thank you for allowing our, my testimony.
Thank you very much, Marsha. Uh, we also have Phil Nerny in opposition.
I apologize for not unmuting. CAI opposes this bill on practical grounds, and I would simply start with the basic understanding that an association is its members. The bills of an association are paid by its members. Consequently, if there is one owner who violates the restrictions, who disobeys, smokes, as one example was provided, doesn't pay maintenance fees, it is necessary to enforce. If there is a need to enforce, then there's a consequence to breaching the rules and to not meeting your obligations towards the association. The question then becomes, who should bear that loss? And the choices are simply the innocent consumers who didn't violate or the person who did violate. Condominiums are a zero-sum game. It's appropriate to assign the loss to the person who caused it. And that's the premise for the operating law relating to associations. Today, with respect to this matter and with respect to others, there are a variety of assertions that essentially say, and I'm exaggerating, but to put a fine point on it, that associations are basically criminal gangs that are aided and abetted by nefarious actors who are property managers and lawyers. What I would say to that is that certainly in the run of cases, that's untrue. And to the limited extent that there are violations, there are courts, and not only are there courts, but there are very capable attorneys who are only too eager to take associations to task. So if this bill were passed, associations would have to make an economic calculus with respect to every matter and would never be able to enforce their governing documents. They would just have to walk away from things. And with respect to safe smoking, maybe that's not specifically an economic thing and you could live with it maybe. But if somebody decides not to pay their maintenance fees and just tells you, I'm not going to pay, and you can't collect, you're going to have to spend more money to collect this money, it's not going to be a paying economic proposition. And consequently, the rule is what it is because that is the only way that condominiums can function. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I noticed that people are raising their hand. What I will say is because I don't want any of the bills to become sort of a count point, uh, count point, counterpoint. Um, I'd like everybody to confine their remarks to when they're called on to testify. And if members end up asking you questions, uh, then you may have a second bite at the apple. But uh, but I, I, I don't want the hearing to devolve into an argument. So for the preservation of decorum, I see several people raising their hand. But if you've already testified, um, uh, I, I won't be calling on you folks again. Um, it's up to members if they want to ask you specific questions, but that helps us preserve decorum so that it's not just people addressing each other's um, remarks and more confining their specific comments to the merits of the bill or the lack thereof, depending on their persuasion. Next, we have Lorie McGuire in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Um, I am uh, testifying in strong opposition to this bill with comments. And I would just like to point out, as Phil Nerny also did, that associations are actually comprised of various owners. There is no uh, head association. It's not like a corporation where you have a CEO and you've got large sums of money. Associations are on a zero-based budget. And thus, they are allowed to uh, spend whatever is in their budget that year. And at the end of the year, the monies are gone. So whenever there is an owner that doesn't comply with the governing documents, the association typically will ask their project manager to send demand letters for enforcement. However, when that owner ignores or does not comply with those demand letters, the association has no choice but to submit it to counsel for enforcement. And counsel will then send out demand letters seeking to enforce. Uh, however, you also have the situation where um, you may have one owner that is requesting uh, an inordinate amount of information or challenging the legality of various things that the board may be doing or the property manager. And out of necessity, these, these matters are referred to counsel to then address. It is only fair for that owner to pay for those attorney's fees that are incurred as a result of that owner's conduct, that owner's request. For example, I have a project where there um, is one owner that has submitted within a two-year time span, seventy-two challenges to various matters and uh, requests for various documents. It is not fair for that person's neighbors to have to pay those attorney's fees for that person's challenge. So when you think about who is going to be paying these attorney's fees, think about the fact that you have association members who are on a fixed income. And these people are abiding by the governing documents, they're paying their maintenance fees. It would be wholly inequitable for these people to have to pay the attorney's fees incurred by other people who choose to not abide by the governing documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorie. Uh, members, is there anyone else in the virtual hearing room who has not had a chance to testify? Who submitted testimony on HB eighteen fifty-seven? Uh, Dale, we don't have your testimony on HB eighteen fifty-seven, but you can go ahead and um, testify. If you haven't submitted, I just ask so that the record can.
So it's okay. It's like to share an anecdote with you. One of my neighbors, the guy was intermittently employed, hill behind, went to attorneys, forty, he owed like nine thousand dollars. And uh, I was always told, he wants the attorneys, you're out of it as a board member. But it's my neighbor, I said, you know, I've watched people get emotional and hold on until they lose their place. They walk up this driveway on the freight highway, flat broke. In that situation, they can go get a, a loan, an equity loan, pay off the debt, sell the place and walk up the driveway with money in their pocket, half a loaf. That's exactly what he did. So sending threatening letters to people doesn't really uh, work all the time. And there's also a small claims court. A lot of these, they go to small claims court first before a regular civil court. I was in civil court by shock, that's pulled a nearby extortion attorney. The judge said, well, the way this works is you throw a lot of money up on the table, hope the other side takes the way, takes and walks away. What the appellate was an escaped murderer from Utah. The guy was a con artist. You know, he, he just did twelve years in prison for murder. He committed ninety-seven. But he never should have been employed in our complex. But that was on the management company, not screening his criminal background. But I support this bill. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Uh, members, please note that's the extent of our testifiers who are present and indicated that they'd be testifying on HB eighteen fifty-seven. Please note, we also have opposition testimony and uh, well, I believe all the written testimony is in opposition on this measure. Members, any questions on HB eighteen fifty-seven?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Hart, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, um, Ms. Sugimura, HCCA. Jane.
I think she might have left the Zoom room. I don't see her anymore.
Let me see, is Mr. Nerny, uh, Phil Nerny still there? Good afternoon, Mr. Nerny. Thank you for being here, for testifying. Um, while this is not in your written testimony, HCCA noted that, and I realize this bill does a multitude of things, but one of the things that was discussed in the Sugimora's testimony that attorney's fees payments by the association are generally operating expenses and cannot be paid from the reserve funds based on the express language in HRS five forty-one B dash one forty-eight. Mr. Nerny, can you just elaborate and explain, like, what is the difference between operating expenses and reserve funds? Because this bill supports to pay for attorney's fees from reserve funds, but it's apparently we're prohibited from doing so pursuant to five forty-one B dash one forty-eight?
I hadn't seen Jane's testimony and I'm not prepared on that point.
Okay.
So I couldn't answer your question off the top of my head. I'm happy to follow up. So I couldn't answer your question off the top of my head. I'm happy to follow up and send an email if, if you would like.
No problem. I'm sorry. There was another woman who just testified, Mr. Chairman, and she, I didn't, I didn't catch her name. I apologize.
I'm, I think you're referring to Lorie McGuire.
Yes, correct. Ms. McGuire, are you still there?
Yes, yes, Rep. Har. I, I am still there and
Are you able to speak to this issue only just because you seem very well-versed in, in the association protocol? I should say the rules in terms of payments of attorney's fees. I'm just, I'm just very intrigued by this because it seems, you know, this is a, this is essentially, I know this bill does a multitude of things, but it really is interesting that it's attempting to pay for the attorney's fees from the reserve funds. But it seems like we're unable to do so.
The reserve funds are typically for capital improvements. For example, you know, you would say in a condominium, it would be your roof or your plumbing or things of that nature that have to be repaired or replaced, you know, every so many years. So you have to set aside reserve funds so that when the time does come for you to replace those items, you have the monies there and you don't have to issue a huge special assessment to the owners in that regard. So your, your attorney's fees are typically paid out of your operating budget, which is your annual budget, and it's budgeted for on a year-to-year basis. By the end of that year, that budget is typically gone. And, and periodically, people do borrow from the reserves in emergency situations. But for the most part, you want to keep your reserves for those capital improvements because they act as a safety net for the owners when the time comes for those improvements to be made.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. McGuire. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Sedino, are you still on the line? Are you still on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Sedino, thank you for being here. I always find your testimony very compelling. First off, I'm sorry for what you went through with your board. And I realize that you are testifying not necessarily to this issue with respect to the payment coming from the reserves. But understanding as a condominium association owner that the reserve funds are expressly reserved for capital improvement projects as opposed to operating expenses, would you, as an owner, do you have an issue with that? That the attorney's fees would be coming from the reserve funds as this bill supports to do?
I'm not exactly an expert on those two different categories of funds. But as far as attorney fees being paid, it seems like the association would have to pay for those somehow, whether it's the operating or the reserve. To me, I don't see that as too much as an, too much of an issue as far as an individual owner. If they do come from the long-term reserve funds, you know, those could certainly be recouped over any number of years going forward.
Okay, but Ms. McGuire just explained that the reserve funds are generally reserved for capital improvements, like the roof leaking, some kind of major brick and mortar kind of issue, and they're required to keep a certain amount of funding in there so that if something, if some flooding happens and it affects the common areas or something like that, then a special assessment would have to be assessed because those, that's already accounted for. The, the board members have been keeping that money in the reserves. So I guess I'm just trying, I, I understand. I know your testimony wasn't on this issue. It was just that the association should have to pay the fees as opposed to the attorney, the individual owners. But that said, I'm just, for you, it doesn't really matter. You would have no issue with the money coming from the reserves?
I don't see any issue right now, just because it seems like the reserve fund could be refunded, I guess, over any certain number of years going forward. And so then the problem should fix itself over a couple or several years.
Okay, but and just let me pay devil's advocate for a minute. So what happens though, let's say the money is used for attorney's fees from the reserve fund, and then the next day, the roof collapses, right? So I, I guess that's what I'm just, you know, again, that's all I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand this particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Sedino. I appreciate your testimony. Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more question?
Please, go ahead.
Ms. Mauer?
Hello, Rep. Har, yes.
Hi, Ms. Mauer, how are you? Nice to see you. Thank you.
Good to see you too.
So diligent and sticking with the CPC committee. I know, again, I heard your testimony, and I don't necessarily think that you testified on this particular issue that I'm asking about. But I know that you're well-versed in reserve funds versus operating expenses. So do you support that part of this bill that you would want the attorney's fees taken from the reserve funds?
No, I agree with Jane Sugimura that it should come from operating expenses. The reality is that those funds are rather fluid. When I look at the budgets of a number of associations, they do not lock aside X amount of dollars for reserves. It appears as some fluidity. And when it comes to operating budget, oftentimes, operating budgets are, I don't, the, the problem word is not inflated, but it has projects in that operating budget or even capital projects out of the reserve that are not done that year. And so there's excess funds. And just to let you know, my association, we budgeted, I think, eight thousand or ten thousand dollars and utilized fifty thousand for attorney's fees.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And not, and not for maintenance fee collections. That was a separate thing.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mauer. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Har. Members, any other questions on HB eighteen fifty-seven? Okay, seeing no further questions on HB eighteen fifty-seven, we'll move on to our last condo-related item on today's agenda, HB twenty-two forty-three. This is also relating to condominiums. And this requires building and structures to be maintained in a safe and sanitary condition. It also requires devices and safeguards to be maintained in conformance with county building codes. Additionally, requiring condominium associations or their designated agents to be responsible for said maintenance of the buildings and structures. And it authorizes the county building officials to require a building or structure to be re-inspected. On HB twenty-two forty-three, I'm not sure if you're still here. I don't think you are, but I'll call you just in case. Jane Sugimura, Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners in support. Doesn't seem to be present. Lorda Shibert in support?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I, first of all, I, I would really love to thank all of you for being here, but especially with Speaker Psaki. Because he helped me write, he submitted this HB twenty-two forty-three. At the last hour, I was unable to campaign to get a senator to do a package on it. And the reason why I feel that this should be, be brought to the attention of the legislature is because associations and in my experience, do not even consider the city and county safety codes and fire codes. When they're applying their projects, I've seen too many of them just go right ahead and do the project and don't do their due diligence in, in complying with the safety codes of the jurisdiction. This is where the problem has arise in the thirty-eight years when they've deferred maintenance all the time. It's why you're getting these huge assessments. Right now, there's three hundred and fifty condos that have been identified that doesn't have enough money, cash money in their reserves to cover the roof from leaking. So, you know, this, by adding this verbiage into that one condo upkeep will give an owner or the whole industry to hold the board to their fiduciary duty. And don't keep kicking the can down the road because eventually, we're all going to pay for it. And I am right now, and it's not unforeseen because it was identified in twenty-eleven. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lordas. Also on HB twenty-two forty-three, we have Lila Moore in support.
Hello, Chair. I'd like to thank the committee for hearing this measure. However, I do think it was written at the last minute. I do find it inconvenient. As you know, I support the measure, but I lean towards a bill that you're going to be hearing later, House Bill seventeen eighty-four. So I'd like to offer testimony at that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lila. We also have Marsha Kimura in support. Marsha, are you still up here? Okay, looks like she's left the hearing. Jeff Sedino? Also looks like he's left. Paul Coftenow?
I have nothing to add, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, in opposition. And Lorie McGuire in support.
That's correct, Rep. Chairman. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, that's the extent of testifiers who have provided testimony on HB twenty-two forty-three who are in the hearing room. Is there anyone else in the hearing room wishing to testify on HB twenty-two forty-three? Phil Nerny?
Another committee member had been assigned to submit testimony on behalf of CAI. Not, I can't verify with whether that occurred or not. CAI supports this with amendments and
We don't have that testimony.
I'll follow up, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But thank you nonetheless for mentioning that. I did have that as a note because some of the testifiers in support noted your testimony, but I didn't see it. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB twenty-two forty-three? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to the community associations section of the agenda, HB seventeen fifty-five relating to planned community associations. This would prohibit any planned community association from assessing a fine or requiring an architectural review for any security cameras commercially available to the general public mounted on the exterior of a member or tenant's unit. First off, on HB seventeen fifty-five, I think you are gone, but I'll just call out of an abundance of caution, Jane Sugimura, Hawaii Council for Association of Apartment Owners in opposition. Not present. Also, Jeff Sedino in support, but seems like not present. Lordas, if you want to testify, I'll call on you at the end after I call those who submitted testimony. Paul Coftenow in opposition.
I stand on my testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Dale Head in support.
Yeah, I support it. I know. Two different wine night complexes where after people installed their doorbell cameras, they're told to get them off or be fine, even though there's no rule against. It's an after-effect rule made up, and we all see those commercials on TV. It's a product that enhances security and sells fine, you know, but, but for humor, real fast. But Kyle Valley Towers made a guy take his off, and the guards completely didn't like the guy being able to look at them when they walk by his unit. But the door opened, the security guards paused, looked inside, see what they can see. No, 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 no. If, if you could buy it at a fair price, it increases your security for you and your neighbors. That's a good, a good purchase, okay? So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. We also have Lorie McGuire in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee.
Sorry, please proceed, Lorie.
Sorry, yes, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I stand on my testimony in opposition, and I would just like to point out, one of the reasons for the opposition is in my experience, the problems that we've had with security cameras, and not in every situation by any means, but oftentimes, security cameras are pointed at one particular unit or another, and then we get complaints from the owners of those units because they feel like their neighbor is targeting them in particular. So that is a problem, and I think that that's one of the reasons for the opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Lordas, did you also want to testify?
Yes, thank you very much. I do, I just want to make a comment on, on this. I'm in agreement. It prohibits any planned community association from assessing a fine on a unpermitted construction. However, I think that this needs more discussion because there is DPP building and safety codes. Regardless of the age of the, of the construction that was done, if it goes up for sale, that the owner is responsible to pull all the permits and see that the safety and the alterations or adding on is compliant with the jurisdiction. And this is about you. You guys need to really discuss this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's provided written testimony that I haven't called on HB seventeen fifty-five who would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB seventeen fifty-five?
Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil. Go ahead.
I apologize. The caveat in your last comment was who had submitted testimony. Again, I wasn't assigned to this bill. I just note that CAI is up in opposition.
You got to have a talking to, to your CIA members. They're shifting.
Sometimes we testify individually and, and individuals get assigned to submit testimony. I can't account for that. I apologize to the committee. I simply note that we oppose based on some of the prior comments, including what Lorie said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Members, any questions on SB seventeen fifty-five? Okay, seeing no questions on SB seventeen fifty-five, we'll move on to the next community association agenda item, HB seventeen fifty-six. This is relating to planned community associations. This mimics the last bill, except instead of security cameras, the content is prohibiting any planned community association from assessing a fine or requiring an architectural review for construction or installation work to the exterior of a member or tenant's unit. It performed more than three years ago. On seventeen fifty-six, this seems to be here. Let's see, is Jane and Jeff Mark, Paul Coftenow?
I, I, I think I may have submitted testimony on this, but it's, it's testimony that was also submitted by other people. So the written testimony is the same. That does make points such as this bill would essentially make it so that alterations made by an owner that are not authorized would be approved, even though they're not authorized, if that owner just sells the property, making the association powerless to enforce their governing documents. I also think that with respect to alterations, the legislature should not step into the shoes of design review committees and dictate what associations can, can do with respect to their, the implementation of their design guidelines. And there may be cases presently being pursued by an association that if this bill were to come into effect, would suddenly take away the rights of those associations from being able to complete the enforcement of their project documents or governing documents against a particular violation. So this bill would effectively disenfranchise associations that are diligently enforced, presently diligently enforcing their governing documents. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We also have late testimony from CAI with Lorie McGuire in support.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I stand on my testimony in this particular case, you know, with comments because we are concerned. You know, there's talking about assessing a fine or basically prohibiting you from assessing a fine against any member or a tenant who basically does any, you know, any construction to the exterior of their unit. You have a situation to where you could potentially have a buyer and seller work together to do exterior improvements, if you will, on the unit. And if they do it right before closing and then they do close, there's no recourse for the association because they wouldn't know it was even happening. The bill also talks about the association shall have up to 90 days after a public report of a close of sale to assess any fines and enforce the findings of an architectural review which once enforced shall not expire. The problem is, there is no public report issued whenever a sale closes. There is a deed that is recorded, but typically the public report is issued at the development stage. Whenever a sale closes, you have the deed recorded, but oftentimes that may happen outside of escrow to where nobody's on notice of anything because two owners have come to, or rather, two, two individuals have come together and negotiated a purchase and sale. And the deed is recorded, the board may not know about it, the design review committee may not know about it for months. And so there is really no, no way for the association to enforce this. Moreover, it's a bit unclear because it talks about that the association may not issue a fine or require a member or tenant to undergo an architectural review. So that that takes away the ability to enforce and you're basically leaving the association only with the recourse of filing a lawsuit to enforce this situation, and that only causes attorney's fees to go sky high. So you know, I just see this as creating even more problems than it seeks to solve. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, Lorie. I mischaracterized and misspoke and characterized your testimony as in support. However, it is in opposition, correct?
Yes, strong opposition.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. Members, that's the extent of folks who have indicated they would be present to testify in this measure, but I can see from Lordess's hand that she would also like to testify. So Lordess, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry.
No, not at all. Please go ahead.
Bill with this bill, and I agree with Mr. Cufftonow and Ms. McGuire that that the the association, the owners, everyone has to pay attention to the Department of Planning, Building, and Fire Safety Codes. That's what they're there for, regardless where you where you installed it in 1991 and you sell it in 2001. Before you sell, you better get everything up to snuff because I had to permit my enclosed window that was installed in 1991 and I purchased my unit in 2004, which was a never mind for me because I was in construction for so many years that this is, this is something that happens. So I went down to the to DPP and I said, listen, I bought the unit, it was already there. How can you help me? And they did. They walked me through the permitting process. I had to sign a a release saying that I'm not selling my unit for over a year. And that's a proper process. Everybody needs to do this. If you're going to sell your unit and you know it's leaking because you did an alteration to the neighbor below, you are obligated to to permit that alteration. So when you sell it to the next person, that owner is not going to become a problem for the association, for the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lordess. Is there anyone else in the virtual room who's provided testimony on HB 1756 that I haven't called who would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, please note that there are various testimonies in opposition and support in written form who just provided written testimony. Members, any questions on HB 1756? Okay, seeing no questions, we will move on to our next agenda item. HB 1757, this is also relating to planned community associations, and this prohibits planned community associations from prohibiting any owner or sub-association from utilizing ZERUS keeping. On 1757, we have Cleo Manuel, Deputy Director at DLNR in support. Or Neil.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. Committee members, Neil Fuji with the DLNR Commission on Water Resource Management. Sorry, Cleo, I have to go to another meeting. So I'm representing the department. So we stand on our in testimony in support of this measure, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you for being so patient since this is at the back of the agenda. We appreciate it. I believe Jane has left. Paul Cufftonow, are you still with us?
Yes, I stand on my testimony. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. In opposition. Limerie McGuire in opposition.
Yes, Chair, I stand on my testimony in opposition.
Okay, thank you. That's the extent of individuals who are here and indicated that they would be wishing to testify. Is there anyone else in the virtual hearing room who would like to testify and provide a testimony on HB 1757? Phil, go ahead.
Sorry for the delay in unmuting. I understand that another committee member submitted testimony in opposition. I simply wanted to note that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we are in receipt of that. My apologies for not calling. Anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1757 who has provided testimony on this measure? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, please note also on this measure there are various written testimonies submitted in opposition and support on this measure as well. Members, any questions on HB 1757? Yale, were you trying to testify on something? I see you unmuted yourself.
Sorry, I'm here for the next one.
Okay, okay. No problem. Members, any questions on HB 1757? Okay, seeing no further questions then, or no questions, we will move on to the building code section of this agenda, which is HB 1747. This is relating to the State Building Code Council. It requires the State Building Code Council to consult with building industry trade associations to gather cost data on the implementation of building codes or standards and calculate the financial impact of those codes. Excuse me, and standards, including amortized utility costs on the cost of the single-family, multifamily homes built in state. It also requires an annual report to the governor to include the costs provided by building industry trade associations on each code and standard adopted by the council. On HB 1757, we have Gail Suzuki-Jones with the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Gail Suzuki-Jones here on behalf of the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written comments noting that building codes are developed to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And also, building industry and others' concerns are addressed at national ICC hearings as well as in the SBCC and investigative committee meetings. Mahalo for the opportunity to provide this testimony.
Thank you, Gail. We also have Matt Sukimura with State Farm Insurance offering comments.
Well, Chair, I'll stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both, I should say, for sticking with us this long. We also have Darrell Takamia from the Building Industry Association of Hawaii.
Aloha, Chair. Stephanie Sakamoto on behalf of BIA Hawaii will stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie, as well. Let's see. We also have late testimony indicating they would be here from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union, Kiko Bukowski. Are you here? Does not appear that you are here offering comments. We have supportive testimony from Naiop Evan Oi. Was on earlier, but appears as though you are not here any longer. Naiop is in support. And I believe, members, that's the extent of people who have provided testimony indicating that they would be here to testify. Is there anyone else in this hearing room who is here to testify in HB 1747 and provide a testimony that I did not call? Okay, if not, members, please note comments and please note testimony in opposition with comments and support have also been proffered in written form on HB 1747. But that will transition to questions. Members, any questions on HB 1747? Okay. Seeing no questions, then we will move on to our last agenda item HB 1784. This is relating to building inspections, and this requires periodic inspections of certain walls and appurtenances of buildings five or more stories in height. On 1784, Jane is still gone. Lila Moore in support.
Aloha, Chair. I have a question too. At any rate, I mean, of course, the measure, however, I find the measure too narrow.
Was that the 20?
Dale, if you can mute yourself. Go ahead, Lila. Sorry about that.
That's all right. In this measure, it mentions exterior walls and appurtenances there too and facades. And I do believe that more needs to be inspected if you're going to be concerned about structural integrity. It's not just the exterior walls and facades that have important, and I'm sorry, I don't know the right words, construction areas that need to be studied. And I suggested Florida's SP 1702, Florida's 2022 legislature major legislative measure. So if you could examine that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lila. Marsha Kimura, are you still here or? I believe Marsha is gone. Lorie McGuire, are you still here? Leave, Lorie is also gone. I believe, members, that's the extent of the testimony we have proffered on HB 1784 of those testifiers indicating that they would be present to testify. Is there anyone else in our virtual testimony room? Okay, Lordess, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am in support of of this bill only because it's a start for inspection. I believe that the Department of Planning and Permitting, it it does go back to the entire building. And I think this bill asks for five stories. But maybe later on, we can amend it, but if you look back at the International Building Codes and Maintenance and in the maintenance field, it's it's suggested and recommended that these buildings be inspected every five years, as such as this bill is saying. And we're not. That's why we have unforeseen expenses with backlog maintenance repair work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lordess. Anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1784 relating to building inspections? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, please note other testimony, written testimonies proffered in support and with comments on HB 1784. Members, any questions on HB 1784?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Har, please proceed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I'm reading the bill and I don't actually have a testified. I'd act, I'd like to ask the Chair a question as the introducer.
Please.
If I may. If not, it's okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand. I thought this is a, the counties have the authority to, they're the ones who perform the inspections. So I guess I'm just trying to understand who are we, who would be that entity in this bill?
So in this bill, you would end up using professionals who are certified based on the ASTME 2270, which is a specific certification that is related to its standard practice for periodic inspection of building facades for unsafe conditions, this building, this bill is premised on the notion that through spalling and other things that you can see on the outside, it's a starting point for inspections.
Okay.
While the counties, the counties do have jurisdiction over inspections, but I'm not sure that the counties actually do a whole lot of inspecting.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then we will recess for decision-making. Recession. We're live on video. Okay, awesome. Okay, reconvening our hearing, our 2 PM hearing this February 3rd of the Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee for decision-making purposes. My thanks to all of our testifiers, as well as our members who have been very diligent and patient as we've gone through this important agenda on condo associations, community associations, and building codes. I'm trying hard to group like things together because then I think we explore sort of fully a lot of the range of issues. And I'm trying to make it convenient for our testifiers rather than having to come to every single CPC hearing, even though we love to see you. First off, on HB 2272 relating to condo associations. Again, this makes various clarifying amendments relating to condo association governance and financial solvency for condos. My recommendation will be to adopt Associate Amendment to delete the new proposed contents on reserve studies on page 13, lines 14 through 20, consistent with the various testimonies that asked for this amendment. I would also like to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, and for members of the public watching, the reason we insert a date so far into the future is just to encourage further discussion on this measure so that it cannot be adopted outright. And that just helps to ensure that the legislature has done its due diligence and deliberating on all measures and changes to the law. I would also like to note in the committee report that many community condo associations do offer accommodation in hard copy and other means of notice, and it's not the intention of the committee to inadvertently curtail that practice. In fact, I'd also like to note in the committee report that it's our expectation that accommodation will continue to be made on notice, and we may need to clarify that further if this bill continues to move since we would be allowing rules to be posted on condo associations websites. And lastly, in the committee report, I'd like to note that even though it's duplicative, because in section 1-30 of Hawaii Revised Statutes, it stipulates that all time specified in Hawaii statutes are Hawaiian standard time. But so technically, we don't need to keep that in this bill, but I would like to keep it in because, as we've seen, members, there are so many disputes in condo association governance and law. And because so many condo associations are multi-state organizations and may only be focusing on this specific portion of Hawaii Revised Statutes, having, even though it's at the risk of being duplicative, I think having Hawaiian standard time in the bill is still a helpful clarification, even if it's not needed. With that, again, the recommendation will be to pass with those amendments. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair Keetagawa for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 2272 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, Representative Aquino.
Aye.
Representative Har.
Aye.
Aye.
Representative Hashem. Representative Kong. Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Onishi. Representative Tarnas.
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto.
Lauren, you have to unmute yourself. We still can't hear you. There we go.
Thank you. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, we have HB, next we have HB 1583 relating to condominiums. Sorry. And on this, I think this is one of the many issues that we've teased out, and I want to characterize. I appreciate folks bringing to our attention some of the areas that I think need to be improved in condo association law, and I have no doubt that there are instances where there are bad actors. However, on this measure, I think, well, sorry, that's more specific to some of the other measures, but on this measure, I think we are transitioning to this system. But I do think that there needs to be sort of an approach to this and ensuring that condo associations can do so effectively, although I thought it was a good suggestion to turn this bill into a task force. I will note, given the Supreme Court's recent ruling about got and replaced and what constitutes germaneness, I'm hesitant to turn a bill specifically into a task force. I do think that a task force is probably needed to best accomplish the spirit and intent of this bill. So because I think the task force might be substantially different in content than this specific bill. My recommendation here will be to defer HB 1583, but to work with the various stakeholders over the interim to come up with a task force that addresses this particular transition, as well as some of the other issues that have been pointed out on some of the other bills. So the recommendation on HB 1583 will be to defer at this time. Next, on HB 1651 relating to condominiums. This is actually what I was referencing with respect to, you know, I have no doubt that there are instances where things are not perfect, and we need to make greater improvements. On this particular bill, though, I am hesitant to usurp the prerogative of the individual condo owner, because they're not forced to delegate their proxy to the condo board as a whole. They can pick a range of options, including just the proxy for quorum, or they can actually vote directly at the meeting. I'm hesitant to undermine that. So for those reasons, although I think good issues have been teased out here that I hope may be addressed by a broader task force on condo association governance. I do think at this point, it would be prudent to defer HB 1651. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay. On HB 1781 relating to planned community associations. On this measures, on this, members, I'll be deferring this for now. It is my intent to bring it up for a vote, but I need some more time to work on some of the various amendments to, I think, accomplish what this bill is trying to do. So 1781, the recommendation is to defer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Representative Har.
Mr. Chairman, I was unable to hit my unmute button before you moved on. Regarding House Bill 1583 and 1651, I want to thank the chair for hearing the bills and for your very thoughtful deliberative process. With respect to a task force, would you be introducing a resolution, I mean, to allow this to occur? Because, you know, I think some of us have sat on the CPC committee for many years. There are these ongoing issues that never be addressed, and everybody is very passionate, all the stakeholders, whatever side you're on. And I'm not sure if once, you know, once and for all, we need to have a task force to address some of these issues, because I think some of the homeowners are very frustrated. The association members and the board members are frustrated because nothing seems to be getting done. So I'm not sure, Chair, and I don't mean to put you, I mean, anyone, any one of us can do that. But I would just, you know, suggest that perhaps before the deadline, we look into that as something as a committee or something, because I think this is, these issues continue to come back every year. So maybe, you know, a task force might be prudent at some point. Thank you, Mr.
You're welcome. And just to clarify again, it is my intent to work on a task force. Whether it meets the deadline by a resolution of this session, or it's a bill next year. It is my intention to work on a task force, because I do agree that there are persistent issues, but that need to be tackled in an overall holistic and systemic sort of approach involving all of the respective parties, so that we don't continue to keep having these fundamental clashes with no resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Let's see. So I think we just finished 1781. So on to HB 1857 relating to condo associations. This one is also tough, because, you know, I agree, right, that whether it's Mr. Sifino's testimony or some of the others, there probably are some bad actors. And again, I think part of the scope of this task force that I hope we can sort of effectuate into reality is is addressing one of these issues. I do worry, however, though, on this particular issue, that sometimes there are situations where direct accountability should still be inherently a part of the enforcement mechanisms and governance of condo associations. And I'm also worried that by directing it toward reserve funds, that it begs the broader question about exacerbating strains on financial solvency of the condo association. It's my generally broad concern that many of the condo associations, I echo some of what Lourdes had contributed, that many of the condo associations may not necessarily even have sufficient financial reserves. So adding another potential strain on that may exacerbate those woes. So again, these are one of the areas that I hope attorneys fees and how associations legally deal with their members, I hope to include in the scope of the task force. But on this particular bill, HB 1857, at this time, the recommendation will be to defer this measure. Next, on HB 2243 relating to condominiums. On this measure, members, I think there was largely supportive testimony. And it does continue to beg a good and healthy broader discussion. So the recommendation on HB 2243 will be to move this measure with one simple amendment, which is inserting a defective date of January 1, 2050, to encourage further discussion on this measure. Members, any questions or comments on the recommendation? Okay. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2243 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Are there any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Next, on HB 1755 relating to planned community associations. Let's see, in in this particular instance for planned community associations, I do think that there is some legitimate discussion here going on about whether it's a ring doorbell or something that happens to be a security camera, but sort of in a carte blanche fashion prohibiting community associations from assessing fines or requiring architectural reviews for any security camera, I think is perhaps a bit of an overstep. And also, I do share the concerns of those raised regarding privacy within the community. Again, I do know that there's a legitimate issue here that I think needs to be explored, but but I think the scope of the bill probably needs to be narrowed so as to not trigger some of these broader privacy concerns and/or potentially exacerbate tensions within the planned community associations. So at this time, the recommendation on HB 1755 is to defer this measure. Next, on HB 1756 relating to planned community associations. On this, members, I do worry about the precedent it starts to set for encouraging unapproved alterations by giving them safe harbor. I mean, I think at some level, individuals are choosing to live in a planned community association or opting to live in a situation governed by community standards, particularly for health and safety and welfare. That expectation is probably created. So although I think there are issues here, legitimate issues inherent in this bill, the recommendation on HB 1756 will also be to defer this measure. Next, on HB 1757 relating to planned community associations. And this would be the prohibition of planned community associations for prohibiting an owner or sub-association from utilizing landscaping. Although I think some of the same concerns potentially accrue with this bill, given sort of our water situation and woes, and I would like to continue to engender further water conservation and landscaping discussions. I do, for discussion purposes, want to keep this measure moving. So the recommendation on HB 1757 would be to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, to encourage further discussion as the amendment to this measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Har.
May I request a ruling on a potential conflict?
Sure.
I'm a homeowner. I'm a homeowner in a planned community association.
No conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1757 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, on HB 1747 relating to the State Building Code Council. And this would essentially require the Building Code Council to consult with building industry trade associations to gather cost data for implementation of the codes and impacts on the codes of various changes to the code. Members, I think this engenders a great discussion on affordability and construction, but also an important one on standards and health and safety. So I would like to keep this measure moving and make several amendments. The first being adopting the amendments outlined in the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters testimony, which actually, which adds to this bill in two parts, Subpoint F and Subpoint I. A provision that, which states, provided that the section shall not apply to codes and standards where its primary purpose and function is to safeguard life, property, and general welfare collectively, that those same words then are made to the other addition to this bill. The reason I'd like to do this and the discussion I would like it to prompt is sort of where cost, where cost potentially confronts health and welfare and safety. They're different. They're important, both are important criteria, but I think I want to make sure that we're including health and safety and welfare in equal consideration when we're talking about cost and having this discussion. So I'd like to adopt the plumbers amendments. I'd also like to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, to keep this discussion going. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1747 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on, and lastly, on HB 1784 relating to building inspections. And this requires periodic inspections. I do want to state, I do agree with Lila Mower that this only addresses the facades and may not go far enough in scope. I'm not sure that there is, in terms of workability, a way to assess the integrity of the entire building, which is why I consider this sort of a start, at least as it pertains to the facade. So the recommendation here, because I do think we need to further this discussion of building inspections, is to pass HB 1784 with amendments, including a defective date of January 1, 2050, making various technical and non-substantive amendments. I'd also like to make a conforming amendment to give the council this particular oversight and enforcement authority. On page 5, line 18, the reference to the Department of Accounting and General Services should be amended to reflect that it should be the respective county agencies based on their purview. And I would also like to amend, include an amendment to clarify that this bill pertains to all existing buildings as of the date of enactment of this bill. And a conforming amendment to ensure consistent timelines in this bill as well. So some good amendments here on HB 1784. Members, any questions or comments on the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Har.
Thank you so much for the amendments. I think they're very well thought through. The one question I have, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, I was trying to go through the bill quickly, but is there, with respect to the age of the building, is there any type of requirement in the bill regarding age of the building? So would this apply to, let's say, a building that's relatively new, was built in the past two years? That, obviously, that wouldn't be an issue. Who knows? It could, though, if there were construction defects.
Right. So I think it's a legitimate question. Right now, the bill is silent to age, because it's more focused on the height. But I do think that that needs to be part of this ongoing discussion, because just because a building is new doesn't mean it may not have substantial defects that could affect health and safety.
Right. And again, I understand that the bill is limited to, you know, five or more stories in height. But again, you know, if you have a high-rise that is a relatively brand-new building and has a plethora of, you know, defects, then, you know, I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't want that building not to have an opportunity to qualify under this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1784 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Any no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, members of the public, for joining us and adding very valuable expertise and perspective. And thank you, members, for being so patient on today's agenda, joining us today. With that, our 2:00 PM agenda of the CPC committee is adjourned.